This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it is six o'clock. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Council Meeting to order. Could we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge of Allegiance?
Due to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and just for all.
Before we begin this evening, since our last meeting, Manassia lost a great friend, Joe Wyder. And you may not have known this, but Joe was involved in so much of what happened here and across the Fox Cities. Joe loved and supported the communities he lived in. It was only one of his many passions. And after moving here in 2004, he consulted with the city on a number of brand development and events, marketing projects. He worked with civic leaders to envision and create what was then the Sunrunner Festival and later Porcha Palooza. And his biggest professional passion was helping small businesses, especially local restaurants and shops. He developed numerous promotional pieces for them and numerous small events. He often would work pro bono just to help them along. He anonymously created and moderated the My Manassia Facebook group, which promoted our community, our businesses, our news and events. And it went over 4,000 local residents. Joe was a very talented marketer, a creative writer, a graphic designer, a video editor, web designer. And he gave so much of himself and his talents to enrich the lives of those around him. Joe was a rock for many. He listened empathetically, open-heartedly, and always left people feeling better with his wisdom and humor. He made people better and inspired kindness, creativity, and appreciation for the present moment. And in conversation, he would always leave you smiling or give you something cool to think about. Joe was especially proud of this marketing video he created for Manassia, which is just as powerful today as three years ago when it was released. I'd like to start our meeting tonight with this video before we begin. You know, I have to figure out exactly how to do this now. I knew it would be easier then than it is now.
Lake Winnebago, the Fox River, Little Lake Buttermore. These historic waters have attracted innovative, ambitious people to Manassia from the very beginning. They flow with the timeless current of the city's proud heritage. In places tranquil, in others turbulent, their sun-spangled surfaces and watercolor waves ripple and ramble through a natural playground. For fishermen, boaters, kayakers, sailors. Life here feels simpler.
Okay, I thought I had it up, but I did.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't want to interrupt.
It's an energetic, friendly vibe.
So, let me try again here.
Enjoying miles of parks.
Am I up now?
And waterfront access.
Did you hit share?
There we go.
Oh, there you go.
There we go.
Lake Winnebago, the Fox River, Little Lake Buttermore. These historic waters have attracted innovative, ambitious people to Manassia from the very beginning. They flow with the timeless current of the city's proud heritage. In places tranquil, in others turbulent, their sun-spangled surfaces and watercolor waves ripple and ramble through a natural playground. For fishermen, boaters, kayakers, sailors. Life here feels simpler, more authentic, just a little less crazy. It's an energetic, friendly vibe. Where residents and visitors feel safe. Enjoying miles of parks, rails, and waterfront access. Nestled in the middle of the Fox Cities. And conveniently connected to all the amenities of Wisconsin's third-largest metropolitan area. This is the perfect place to live the uniquely vibrant, colorful, and active lifestyle. Manassia, your place on the water.
So I'd just like to say thank you to Joe for all the things he's done for us over these years and we'll miss you greatly. With that, we have a couple guests here this evening. Jamie was here a moment ago from the Fox East Chambers. There's Jamie. And I'm going to see if I can do better giving you access to the screen than I did for myself. Jamie, there you go. Are you able to share?
Do you want to do roll call?
Yeah, we need to do roll call.
Sure. Sorry, I missed one. If we could do a roll call, please.
I'm here.
Alderman Langdon? Alderman Langdon, your mic is muted.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
Alderman Tomcarty?
Here.
Alderman Ted Carty?
Here.
Alderman Repella?
Here.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Was that everyone?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So JB Swan, Selene, I always get your name wrong. Selene is here from the Fox East Chamber this evening. I think I have allowed you to share your screen. There we go. If you would like to do that, she's here to talk to us a little bit about the Fox Cities Regional Partnership and their strategic planning process. Yep.
Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Just a side note, Joe was a great contributor to the Chamber as well, and he wrote for our magazine. And so we feel his loss as well. So again, thank you. Just quickly, quick PowerPoints to kind of go through, keep me on track. The Fox Cities Regional Partnership is a public-private partnership. And apparently I keep on hitting a button that I shouldn't. And it's really about our local economy, expanding our economic opportunity, improving quality of life, and then supporting the expansion of the local primary job base. We are a division of the Fox Cities Chamber of Commerce. This is our staff. Obviously, I am wearing the same suit, and I chose to do that on purpose. But Jennifer Brown is our Senior Director of Industry and Innovation. She does a lot of our business retention, a lot of our research, and helps out a lot with our development. Amy Anderson is on our talent side of things with our K-16 partnerships and making sure that our businesses have the talent pipeline that they need to keep working and employ people in the region. Some of the outcomes that we've had over the last couple of years, between 2019 and 2020, we've done over 201 business retention and expansion visits in 17 different municipalities. And we've provided some information and helped kind of ease the gaps or ease the transitions between municipal and businesses. Between 2013 and 2020, we've worked on 18 expansion or retention projects, retaining about 2,050 jobs, either retaining or creating new, helping to create new jobs, with an annual payroll of over $150 million. During this, during COVID, we've had to kind of switch gears. We were on the track of doing our strategic plan and getting that underway. But COVID, the pandemic hit, so therefore we had to kind of switch gears. And we did a lot of stuff in collaboration with other business organizations. So we created this Stronger Together Coalition with the CBB and a few other chambers downtown Appleton. Sorry, Appleton Downtown, and Future Nina were part of that. And we created some of the content that you see on the screen towards the right, just helping businesses with the message of, you know, be patient, wear a mask, we're trying to do our job so that we can stay open, so please follow guidelines. We also surveyed 142 businesses on impact of COVID early on, pretty much mid-March. And 50 of those businesses asked us for assistance of identifying financial assistance, not including the revolving loan funds that we've worked on. And then also, we held weekly and other meetings for economic development partners to get together and talk about how they're kind of getting through the pandemic at that time. In addition to that, we consulted with 47 businesses on the Family First Corona Response Act, the CARES Act, Safer at Home, and the mask mandates. This was a source of a lot of confusion for a lot of our businesses, so we were able to put together a lot of resources and help them understand how to navigate those pieces of legislation. We drafted over 220 letters for the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporations World in Campaign. That means $550,000 went to area small businesses because of these grants. So they were not able to obtain a grant without going through either a municipal, I know the city had written some, you wrote 220, and helping those small businesses get $2,500 grants. We finalized our strategic plan. We did that. We ended up finalizing that in August and started implementing some of that before it was even finished, which is one of the bullet points here, which is Purchase and Install Synchronist, which is a database for maintaining business retention and expansion data. So every time we go out and meet with a member or a business in the area, we record that visit. We record the conversation of how they answered a survey. And then at the end of the quarter, we will run reports and provide those reports to you. Also, over time, we're going to be able to see trends in the data and see if there are certain areas that we need to work on and focus on more, whether that's talent, or bringing in supply chain, or reassessing our targeted industries. And also, one of the most important things that I think that we've worked on is we formed a work group to really look at the funding and governance of the regional partnership. I understand that we cannot maintain the same model that we're at. And having that conversation now, getting everyone on board to find a better way for funding and governance, I think is critically important. And so we have been meeting on that pretty regularly. We're coming up with a few models and hope to have a proposal for all of our municipal partners to look at in the next couple of months. Getting back to the revolving loan funds that I mentioned earlier. So during COVID, we took on the task of assisting Winnebago County and Otagami County in administering their revolving loan funds. And we assisted 47 small businesses through the process. So we promoted the revolving loan funds, and then we also consulted with every single one of those businesses to make sure that they had the proper documentation, whether it's a PNL or the application filled out correctly, the correct financials, to get them through the process, which is no small task, because a lot of these small businesses don't have accountants that regularly maintain their records. So we had to help them through that, through that process. We injected over $440,000 into the local economy and directly retained 400 jobs. Now, we know that's a direct number, but that also has an indirect number, so that those jobs number is actually higher than that. And the type of businesses we helped with were restaurants, medical fabrication, early childhood centers, retail shops, a lot of carpentry, things of that nature. And as you can see on the map over here, five of those businesses were in Manassia. We had 13 in Nina. But what Jennifer and I, who worked on the program, were very proud of is that the bulk of those revenues in Winnebago County came to the northern half and into the Fox Cities. So looking forward, what our strategic plan is for the organization is really to focus on the bread and butter of what economic development is, which is business retention and expansion visits, business attraction and talent attraction. We are working on doing 80 to 100 visits a year, which is proving to be fairly difficult because of the restrictions due to COVID-19. We're not able to get into offices because of the pandemic. But it seems that a lot of people have extra work on their hands right now because of it, and it's just not as easy to get into offices as it has been. But we keep on plugging away at it and trying to get as many visits in as possible. We are targeting primary employers, and then we are going to be bringing our municipal partners along. So Sam, when we do meet with businesses in Manassia, we'll be inviting Sam to the table to have that conversation, unless our business says no. In that case, we're going to try to provide as much information with Sam and the rest of you as it pertains to that visit. We collaborated with all of our municipalities and put together a list of 350 businesses that we're going to target for visit over the next three years. Now, this isn't to say that these are the only visits that we're going to make. Give you an example, when Air Wisconsin announced that they were furloughing employees, we reached out to Air Wisconsin and also Gulfstream just because of the similar industry and the concern over loss of business there. So these are the primary target, but other things may come up as we continue on. And again, Synchronist, we are now using Synchronist to track that data, provide you better information as we go on. Really, the whole point of this is to be as transparent with you as to our work as possible. Business attraction is the second item. We're going to promote the region digitally and through other communication tools. But first, before we do that, we have to research, analyze the local community factors to make sure that we're targeting the right industries, that we know what we're looking for. Right now, we have a pretty good idea, but we're going to be employing some students from UW, or I'm sorry, from the University of Lawrence University, and working with them and their instructors to really nail down, are we going after the correct industries? And then also looking at our supply chain, what are the gaps in the supply chain? And then what specific factors influence businesses locating in the Fox Cities region? This is going to take, this is a good chunk of work here to do all that data analysis. But we do have a lot of great help from some individuals who practice data analytics for a living. And we feel comfortable that within the three-year scope of this strat plan, we'll have some really good data. And then talent. That's the number one thing that we're hearing from employers is even with the higher unemployment that we have now, there still have a lot of job openings. In fact, you may recall that there was a drive-through job fair in Manassia just last week. And they had 190 individuals come through and pick up information on jobs. Now, we would have liked to seen higher numbers, of course, because we have a lot more job openings. But we're going to have to attract talent as much as possible to kind of get us through into that next phase of being a real economic engine. So we're going to collaborate with our post-secondary institutions to make sure that we're training and retraining individuals who are unemployed or underemployed, to make sure that that conversation between the business and those post-secondary partners are there. Find creative ways to assist individuals, such as the drive-through job fair. There is the mobile lab from DWD that we like to bring up here and put in strategic locations to help individuals who may not have access to internet or smartphones to look for jobs. And then do targeted talent campaigns. Should we be looking at alumni of UW-Oshkosh or Lawrence? Should we be attracting individuals with a military background and really kind of pinpointing what we should do instead of the throw-the-spaghetti-against-the-wall tactic? And then making sure that our communities are ready for diversity. Making sure that we have information about local stores that provide products for individuals of a diverse background. So with that, I appreciate the time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have time for that.
Does anyone have questions for Jamie?
I do.
Mark, go ahead.
Yeah. Hi, Jamie. Alderman Mark Langdon here. Hi. Would it be okay if I ask you who the five businesses in Manassia were that you contacted or worked with?
I'm sorry, the five businesses?
In Manassia.
Oh, that's a great question, and I apologize. I'll have to get back to you on that. I don't have the list on me. My colleague has been keeping track of that, but I can get that to Sam?
Sure, that'd be great. Also, it seems like we only get yearly updates from you guys. Would there be a possibility of maybe at least once a quarter, we get an update on where everything is at, where the Fox Cities is at?
Yes, Alderman Langdon, you're reading my mind. So part of our strategic plan is to have, we have metrics with quarterly report outs. So yeah, we will be doing quarterly reports. We'll be using Synchronist to pull those information on the BRE visits and then give updates on our attraction, both in business and talents, on a quarterly basis. So I thank you for reminding me. I appreciate that. Yeah, we will be doing that.
Cool. Thank you, Jamie. That's all I have.
Alderman Nichols, did you have something as well?
Yes, thank you. You had a slide about business attraction in your presentation. And so I'm wondering if your strategies are directed at individual businesses per se, or growing and diversifying different sectors of the Fox Valley economy?
I think it's twofold, right? So we get reports from WDC and New North about businesses that are looking to come into Northeast Wisconsin. So that's an individual where we would go up, we work with our municipalities to provide information about different sites in the area for them to locate. But also, we will be, so that's one marketing tool. The other marketing tool is looking at, all right, where is the supply chain gaps? What could we do better to make our businesses, or allow our businesses to be more efficient, and go after companies that could fill that supply chain gap? So it's very targeted, but also a little bit more broad than just attracting one business that's looking to come into Wisconsin. Does that answer your question, Alderman Nichols?
It does answer my question. I always am wondering when we, as a region, will become more interested in diversifying our economies so that, for example, when the manufacturing sector suffers a bunch of losses, that we have other sectors, like a tech sector, or a financial sector, or health sector, that, you know, those things can work together to stabilize economies instead of having these ups and downs that we often see, maybe not here regionally, but in other places.
If I may respond to that, yeah, I think when we get that study done, we will be able to figure out where there is opportunities to grow. I know insurance is one of those areas where we have a good amount of insurance in the area, that we could probably build upon that and shore that up as well. You know, tech, everybody's trying to go after tech. I think that, you know, I think there's some synergies that we could use in Northeast Wisconsin, and not just the Fox Cities to bring in more tech. But I do believe that once we're done doing all the research in inventory and where our sectors are at, where our supply chain gaps are, and what businesses need in order to successfully locate here, we'll have a better understanding of a broader scope. But as of right now, I have to wait for that data to come in.
Thank you.
To tell you what we could do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does anyone else have questions for Jamie? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Doc. Hi, Jamie. In your presentation, you had mentioned you worked with Appleton Inc. and Future Nina. What was that project?
So we did several different campaigns during Safer at Home and then the end of Safer at Home. We put together some PSA videos on mask-wearing and just kind of a reassuring video that, okay, things are, you know, uncertain now, but things will get better at Fox Cities. We are always stronger together, and that's how the name of the coalition came together. We've done a number of different webinars, providing information to businesses on cost-cutting measures, on mental health. A lot of the questions that, you know, we hear from businesses and, you know, as they're trying to learn more, as we're all kind of going through this, you know, unique time. So we've done a lot of education, a lot of social media. We've done a lot of stuff on supporting small businesses, whether it was Takeout Tuesday. We'll be doing a campaign for Shopping Local for the holidays. And so we continue to work together on a lot of those items. And that's been the bulk of it. We've had conversations with some of the health departments about how to best inform our members of what the best, you know, protocols have been to stay open and keep healthy and providing that information to businesses.
Does your organization have anything to do with the Amazon Prime location?
That project predates me. I would love to say yes, but no, that project predates me. So I don't have any information on that. In fact, in talking with the gentleman at Greenville, the town of Greenville, they didn't even know it was Amazon until the signs went up, because it's done through a third party. And they're not allowed to disclose their client. So they didn't even know that it was Amazon until those signs went up. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for coming tonight, Lisa, at least Jamie. And we appreciate your presentation and look forward to hearing from you again soon.
I appreciate it. I'll thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Take care.
You too. We'll move on to our COVID-19 update. We do have Nancy McKenney here somewhere. There, she popped back up. And Chris Vanderheiden's here as well with the announcement today of the school district going virtual. We thought we would have him here as well if there were any questions or if he wanted to say anything. So with that, Nancy, I'll turn it over to you. Yeah, turn your mic on though, please.
Good evening, everybody. I'd just like to start by thanking everybody for really hanging in there and listening to these metrics. Every two weeks since March, you've seen the numbers. But what we haven't seen is the dramatic increase in confirmed cases of COVID-19 like we have in the last two-week period. The number of confirmed cases in this last two-week period ending September 15th increased from 59 to 65. Between Friday and Monday, we had 20 additional confirmed cases. We currently have 75 active cases of COVID-19 with 87 contact investigations. The case rate, and you know, we've talked about the case rate. And Mayor, if you could share my, let me share my screen and just kind of show that picture once again. You are familiar with this chart. And what this does is it shows you the case rate, the trend, and the burden by two-week periods. So when we look at the case rate, Manassia right now is, we have 65 cases in the last two-week period. Our case rate is 370. The last time we met, it was 337. And we were right at this edge of the lighter, or the medium-blue area, which means that we had a high level of disease activity in the community. That tipped over into the very high area, which is critical. It means that the trend is growing. You can see how this is almost like a rocket, the way it goes up. The trend is growing, and this critical area, this very high area, means we're at a tipping point. And what we want to do is avoid uncontrolled community spread. Now, Manassia is not so different than other communities, and that's why I kind of like using the case rate, even though it's by 100,000. Other communities use this as well. And you could see that the city of Appleton, which is much larger, had 307. And you could see that, uh, city of Appleton, which is much larger, had 307 confirmed cases in the last two week period. Their case rate is high, very high also, as well, uh, Calumet County, Outagamy County and Winnebago County were all in this very high range while the state was at a high, uh, high area. So there's, there's concern, um, between all health officers in, uh, the entire region. And we've been meeting, uh, weekly with the school districts. Um, and then we have also been meeting as local health officers with strategies. So, since the very beginning, the health department has been working to integrate, um, schools in our pandemic planning and the schools have integrated us into their pandemic planning. So we have been looking at these numbers with the school district for a very long time. Also, in this last two week period, what we have seen is a growth in our hospitalization cases. For a very long time, we sat at around six hospitalizations and then most recently, um, it's jumped to 11 this past weekend. And that is, um, also of concern. We received a message from one of the healthcare systems that indicated that they have a concern that their hospital rates are going up in the Fox Valley area. Uh, this also poses challenges to our disease investigators, those people that contact, those with pos- positive cases. Um, they need to do that within 24 hours so we can isolate the, the disease and we can identify close contacts, um, make sure that they are quarantined so that disease doesn't spread. This has been very, very hard. Um, we actually started to work with the state to assist us with this because it became so difficult, but so did a lot of other health departments. And now the state has difficulty also. So we have to do whatever we can to suppress the disease. We've also hired on additional staff to do contact tracing and help us manage these cases. The Manasha Joint School District and the Health Department have planned, um, we started, like I said, from the very beginning, but we did develop a plan that we have been following. Um, we've been looking at the metrics both daily and on a weekly basis with them. And again, we're very hopeful that we didn't have to go all virtual. Um, however, we can't deny this, the statistics that we see, the numbers that we see. Um, the, um, the virus is highly transmissible. It's very efficient. Uh, we want to make sure that people take all the precautions they can. We are still concerned about those who are at the very highest risk, uh, of becoming seriously ill, and that would be people with underlying health conditions of all ages. Uh, that would be people with diabetes, heart diseases, lung diseases and compromised immune systems and those over 65. So we're actually asking the community to help us now and take action. Stay home if you are sick or are waiting for your COVID-19 test results. Avoid groups and gatherings. We've had this conversation before about weddings, funerals, uh, parties, graduation parties, all different events. If they're large, um, there's likely to be transmission and we have been, um, in contact with individuals that have been parts of outbreaks. We encourage you to stay in your family units. Stay six, six feet away from other people when you leave your home. Wear a mask or a face covering when you're in public. And wash your hands regularly for at least 20 seconds. When we talk about the mask too, I just want to mention that a lot of people think that the mask is a substitute for physical distancing. It is not. You have to use both and both people have to use the mask. Um, the masks that we use right now, we call them masks, they're actually face coverings. They don't provide as much protection as a healthcare worker's mask. That's a different grade. Um, so there's still a risk of transmissibility. Want to make sure that you know that there is a COVID testing site open at Sunny View Expo Center in Oshkosh. This site opened on September 1st and it will be open through the end of December. And anyone five years or older with symptoms of COVID-19 or who has been exposed to a person with COVID-19 may get tested at the site and testing is free. All of the information is on our website, uh, our Manasha Health Department website. Uh, we encourage you to visit the website for further information and just want to take a moment to really commend our staff. They have worked so, so hard to, to try to suppress the disease in the community. Um, and they are also working with influenza vaccine clinic plans. That'll look a little different than it did in the past. We won't have um, everyone coming at once. It'll be by appointment and very, uh, structured. But we would encourage people to get your influenza vaccine. We don't want both, uh, being transmitted in the community. Also want to take a minute and thank the Manasha Joint School District. They have literally done everything they can. Uh, implementing, uh, physical distancing in the schools, encouraging mask wearing and actually very good compliance with that while in the schools. Um, examining ventilation systems, uh, encouraging hand washing, uh, separating desks, going hybrid. They have really literally done, uh, so much to help protect families. Um, but looking at the data, I will ask Chris if, if he would like to comment now.
No, I just, I would just echo that. It's been a good, uh, it's been a good working relationship. We appreciate the help from the, uh, the Health Department. Um, we just, you know, despite, I think all of our best efforts, we just got to a point where these numbers are too high to, uh, to look away from, uh, taking some kind of action to help out with the issue. I'm just doing a little bit of scribbling at my desk here and pretty much if nothing else happens this week, that number's going to be well over 550, that burden rate, uh, for next week. So, um, you know, that's, that's a huge issue for our community. We really need to do what we can to bring that under control. Uh, we realize this is not easy for a lot of our families and that's certainly something we've kept in mind and we don't land on this decision lightly. Um, however, we certainly have let people know from July on that this possibility of making a switch was a possibility. So again, I hope folks have a plan B and that they're ready to implement that and, uh, and move forward from there. And we'll get through this and, uh, work hard to get kids back in school as quickly as we can and, uh, hopefully get them all back, uh, before too long.
Thank you, Chris.
Anyone have questions for Nancy or Chris?
Yes, uh, Alderman Ted Grady, uh, Chris, and I see Brian's on here too. Will we continue the hot lunch programs through this whole pandemic and keep that going for the students and parents and all?
Yes, absolutely. Brian, go ahead. If you want to share some details.
Mayor?
Uh, yeah, unfortunately Brian isn't coming through. I don't know if, Chris, do you have some of those details?
Yeah, I do actually. So we'll do similar drop off and pick drop offs and our pickup times that we did while we were off in the spring. Um, so the letter we sent out today, Clovis Grove, um, will be, uh, pickups on a daily 11:45 to 1:15. And then we have a, a pickup for our virtual learners, because remember we have a, uh, quite a large group of kids who are doing all virtual, who we're feeding now as well. Um, Maplewood, uh, Manacho High School, and then we'll do the Calumet Truck Road again, where we'll have drop offs and pickups at the Calumet Street and Schindler Place Apartments. So very similar to what we did in the spring.
Okay. Thanks, Chris and Brian.
Yep.
Alderman Taylor?
Just like to thank Chris and Nancy and, uh, all their staff. Uh, this is, uh, uh, something that's, nobody can plan for and, uh, uh, the stress that your departments are all under and yourselves is, uh, uh, tremendous. And we again just, uh, thank you and your staff, uh, staffs for, um, everything you're doing for the community.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, great. Thanks for coming tonight, Chris and Brian. We appreciate you. Oh, I'm sorry, Becky.
Thank you. I had to get my microphone on. Um, Director McKenney. Um, you mentioned the importance of wearing masks. Uh, can you also address, um, the importance of wearing them even outdoors?
Yes. Um, many people think that because you're outdoors and there's ventilation, that you don't have to wear a face covering and, uh, quite frankly, that's where I think people have problems. You do need to keep the six foot distance and wear masks, um, because there's a tendency to move toward each other, to converse. And like I said, these are not medical grade masks. There's still risk of transmission. If people are talking loudly or they're singing, um, you can still transmit, uh, droplets. Um, there is still risk. So we do have to be cognizant that even though we're outdoors, we should be wearing face coverings.
Thank you for that. You also mentioned that the, uh, healthcare systems in the valley are sounding the alarm. And could you just talk, uh, a little bit more about why that is at this point?
Yeah, that's a, um, interesting because you, you folks have probably seen some of the work we've done around, um, the individuals that require hospitalization. The Fox Valley region, um, has metrics and they look at bed availability. And that bed availability shrinks when we have COVID-19 and they're in for a very long time. Um, they, they don't, they, they convalesce for a while. The health systems have become better at the outcomes. So one positive is we aren't seeing the deaths that we once did. But we're still seeing people who, um, have to be admitted because they are struggling to recover from COVID-19 and they do need the hospitalization. Um, to help, you know, make sure that they are, uh, back on their feet eventually.
And can you speak at all to what happens when that hospital system becomes overwhelmed?
They're actually going into search capacity. One system is right now where they actually have wings that they open up for additional beds. Um, we've been told that that is occurring. So that is of great concern because of course we want to make sure that those resources are available and people are not treated with critical care. So, um, yes, we need, we need to really take this seriously.
Thank you for that. Uh, Superintendent Vanderheiden? Could you, um, you know, you and I have conversations sort of infrequently, but I, you know, I, if there's anyone who desperately wants kids to be in school, you know, in my opinion, that's you and you understand the importance of that. Can you just, uh, share with everyone the process or how you came to this decision?
Sure. Uh, yeah, again, and, and no doubt, I was, I was on my bike Saturday, biked up to the gym to, uh, watch some volleyball and over to the soccer field to watch some soccer and I was at the football field on Friday night, watching the scrimmage, uh, of socially distanced and away from folks. Um, but it was great to see what was all going on and the kids just, uh, you know, getting in their activities, venerating the classrooms. Um, the challenge for us, you know, is, is mul- there's multiple levels for it. Number one, certainly the numbers in the area are concerning to us from a community standpoint. We're the, one of the top three areas in the country right now in terms of increasing, uh, cases of COVID. Um, the, the second piece for us is we've been quarantining staff and students because of cases that have been brought into school. So as Nancy talked, alluded to this a little bit, and I don't know if you picked it up or not, but we've had people sending their kids to school after getting tested and not getting results back yet. And then they'll get the results the next day, find out they were positive. Now I've got a whole classroom full of kids that are going home for 14 days. Uh, we've had a lot of that kind of stuff happening. And the more that happens, you know, the fewer kids we have to teach. The kid piece we're, we're okay at yet, but the other element of that is the teacher piece. So with the teachers who are getting exposed via that, as well as the teachers being in that ranking of, um, 20 something to 30 somethings, um, that will all of a sudden call on a weekend and say they were exposed to somebody who has COVID. So our teaching ranks have really started to dwindle. We've had, we had five, uh, sub absences not filled today, and we had that twice last week and one day four. Um, and it's not so easy for us as usual. We can usually pull other people in or just combine classes, but given the restricted number of children we have in a classroom, uh, that's very difficult for us to do right now. So not having enough substitute teachers is a huge issue for us. And we're just seeing that problem getting, uh, further and further down the road. So it was time to make a decision and we felt the time was now.
Okay. Um, two things from the letter that was sent to, um, parents. The first one, the first thing is it says schools and all activities will stop. Does that include athletics?
Uh, I don't think it says schools and all activities will stop. I said they'll run through Tuesday. Um, athletics right now, uh, the consideration on the table is that we're going to let athletics roll because of the positive, uh, uh, opportunity that is for a lot of our students. And our athletic teams have been doing a, a super job also of making sure that they're as safe as possible. Uh, having kids wearing masks even while they're practicing and social distancing, uh, to the amount possible. Um, keeping kids separate when they're on sidelines, for example. Um, and we have not had, knock on wood, um, any problems with COVID with our, in our athletics. So at this point, we're going to let those go forward and we'll kind of play that by year.
Okay. And then the second thing was I, I don't believe I saw a date, uh, at which school will resume in person. So, uh, could you address that for everyone?
You're right. There was not a date that said when we would resume. Do you want me to say more than that? Yeah, there's, yeah. I, I have left my crystal ball at home today, so I do not have the answer to that question. Uh, we will continue to monitor the numbers as we move forward, uh, in our community and, uh, and, and keep looking at those metrics to see when we feel a little safe to bring students back again. Uh, obviously our case numbers are going to have to go down considerably. So we do not put our health system, a healthcare system in a position where they can't handle the cases that are coming their way. Um, and, and we know that again, kids can be asymptomatic and they can be spreading the disease without knowing it. So we just feel this is one way for us to help our community, uh, get past this and move on.
Thank you. I read it three times and I said, nope, there's not a date in here.
You are correct. And I will, I will, we'll look, this is for sure for two weeks and then we'll revisit it after that point. So that's the point. We'll revisit and take a look again at the numbers and see if we're ready to open back up again. So.
And, uh, speaking for myself only, I think that really just emphasizes how, uh, this is really dependent on our individual behaviors and taking responsibility for that and doing everything that we can to decrease the number of cases and make sure that, um, kids can be in school and business can, can operate. So, thank you for what you're doing.
Do you have something else, Alderman Taylor?
Yes, uh, Chris, uh, uh, the sports, will that be, uh, uh, there will, won't be any fans allowed? Yeah, let's say like football, will that be streamed or anything like that?
So we, we did think that's a good question. Actually, we just added a camera at Calder, so that will be streamed. So there is a service available for that. I think that info's been out on Facebook, but I'll try to make sure Rick gets it out there again. Um, that there is the opportunity to stream our volleyball matches, our soccer games that are played at Calder and our football games that are played at Calder. Um, we were looking at allowing fans, um, two per child. Um, for football, we felt that was important. Um, having been a football coach myself for several years in my past, um, I've, I've been in game situations where I have a kid who's pretty significantly injured and, uh, it's good to have their parents, uh, handy for making decisions about where and when to send them. Um, so that was kind of the tipping point for allowing some of that. Um, that was a decision that was, uh, kind of decided upon by the conference that we're joining back into. That, that's a whole complicated story, but um, that may be revisited with the current numbers where they are. We may take a look at doing something different there as well.
Okay. And, uh, will that be posted on, uh, City of Manasha website or is that the sports or is that on the school website?
Which piece are you looking for there? The, um, access to the, uh?
Football, soccer, things like that.
Uh, the, the schedule I think is out on the school website already.
Okay.
I'm on the calendar. That should be out there. Um, uh, yeah, as far as, um, fans, the people, sorry, go ahead.
It'll tell what sports are streamed then?
Um, that I'm not sure. Let me double check. I'll ask that. That's a good question. I'll check with Rick tomorrow what they're doing in terms of. I know the schedule's out there. I just don't know if it indicates if they're streamed or not. So.
Thank you. And Nancy has another question. For Nancy, the N95 mask, is that, is that mask medical quality?
Yes, that's medical quality, but it has to be fit tested. You know, we have to make sure they fit well. They are generally reserved for healthcare workers. So just so you know, that is, that is a quality grade mask.
Okay, and let's say the virus, is it, is it out in the, in the air? Or is it, is it airborne or does it have to have a whole, a person to spread it?
Yes. So it's primarily spread by droplets, but there is aerosol that can hang in the air. So they do recommend, you know, making sure that we stay that distance, which I think is, you know, something that we, we discussed. So. Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Mark, did you have something else too? Pam, do you know that your screen is shared now?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mark.
Oh, so Nancy, we should really be, you should only wear a mask once. And if you're, I wanted to share this. I know Stan is getting into walking. I'm getting more into my exercising now. And as far as the exercising goes, if you're going to start working out harder or working more, you should really work without a mask on because of the oxygen level in the mask that you only have. Then you start breathing the poisonous air. And is that correct or especially the changing the mask, only wearing the ma, that mask once? And you have to keep changing?
Well, actually, you're right on the masks needed, needing frequent changes, especially if they're wet because it compromises the integrity of the mask. There are, people use masks to work out, to run, to play football, to practice. So there's not adverse effects. I can get you research that gives you more information about that. So a lot of people have said that they don't want to wear them while exercising. But that isn't necessarily the research, so I'll make sure I get that to you.
Okay. Thanks Nancy.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
For Nancy, Nancy, if I'm walking by myself in the community, I don't need to wear a mask.
No, if you, and.
If I'm walking with someone or something, that would be different.
Right. And I think that, that large group issue is huge. So that, that's a really big issue. Your family units are a different story. Being alone is a different story. But let me give you an example. Going for a hike, going on the trail where you may run into other people. Stop and talk, stop and chat. All of a sudden, you're in that situation where you don't have a mask.
Right. I carry one sometimes. It's just, I wanted to make it clear, people are watching. If you're by yourself and you're walking on the trail and there's no one for a mile, that it's not floating in the air and then you're going to get it. It's.
Yeah, and I think, I think to be clear, a lot of this is common sense, right? But where we, where we run into issues is there's a lot of people congregating in groups. A lot of people in groups and then they aren't always masking up. And there's inconsistency. And they're often within six feet of each other because they think the mask protects them. And that isn't necessarily the case. So that's what we have to be aware of. Making sure we don't gather in large groups. Making sure we're mindful about the personal protective equipment we do wear and when we wear it. And mask is among those. And the other tool, of course, is the distancing and the hand washing. But this is a highly transmissible virus. And it will find a host. And, and I think, you know, Chris mentioned the children. They have been great in school, keeping masks on and distancing. But they are people from the community and they interact with society. So they come from different areas and into the schools. So when they go back into those areas, they have to keep the same practices in place, which is difficult.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you for coming tonight, Kristen.
I have one more done.
Okay, we're getting kind of personal on the questions, so.
Nope. On, on this one, Nancy, you feel that the people are not using the, the safe at home anymore. They're getting Nancy and antsy and just kind of saying to heck with it. I think, I think that might be too where.
Yeah. There's a lot of, I mean, there is COVID fatigue, right? We, we want to be out where, we want to interact, we want to work, we want to be in school. All those things are there. And yes, I, I believe that people, you know, with the best intentions are missing each other. There's a very human element to this. So, so I can understand it. It's just that right now, given what we see in our community, we have to double down.
Yeah.
And really take it seriously and, and really watch what we're doing. It's just too easily spread.
It is. All right. Thanks Nancy.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks again, Nancy and Chris and Brian, even though we couldn't talk with Brian. We'll move on to the minutes and communications if we have a motion.
Mayor, I just want to say to Nancy, how long does it take to get your test results back from Sunnyview?
So, you know, we did, we did have a quick turnaround in the very beginning. We're starting to see that system is at capacity for taking, doing tests. And so it's taking a little longer now. So where I was hearing a two day turnaround, you know, I'm hearing four day. So if you have any questions about tests, there is an 800 number that you can call that will actually give you your test status where it's pending. But they are taking a little longer than they were initially. But I think that by and large, they've been doing a pretty good job. We've heard a couple that are lagging, but most of them are coming back to us very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Stan?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive minutes A through D and communications E through G.
Is there a second?
Second.
So there's a motion, a second. Is there a discussion? Ted, did you have some discussion?
No, I did not. Sorry.
Okay. Anyone else have discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Item H is the consent agenda. There are seven items. Does anyone wish to have items separated this evening? Sam?
I think we need to separate all of them.
Okay, go ahead. You're going to make a motion to start out with?
Other part of public works, so I'll let Mark do that.
Well, there's a common council minutes as well. Is there a motion for the common council minutes of nine?
I'll make a motion for the common council minutes of nine eight twenty.
Second. So second for all Langdon. Any discussion? Did you have any discussion, James? No?
I just wanted to know if Mark wanted to take one at a time. It's kind of thrown on him.
Well, Stan asked for them all to be separated, so.
He asked to. Okay.
You don't have to, but Stan asked. So since Stan asked, that's how they're going to be. All those in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing none, if we could have a motion for item two, which is the change order approval for Romer Utilities. Mark?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. I make the motion to approve the change order approval for Raymer Utility Service. That's an addition of $97,407.4 cents.
Second.
The motion, a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Does anyone have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
A motion for item three?
I have a motion to have the approval for the change order to TLC sign as the Public Works Construction Project Contract Unit Number 2020 dash zero six for sign lettering. And that's an addition of $5,932, change order number two. And change order number 12.
Second.
The motion, a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Is there no discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
That Alderman Repella's head that's voting?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're getting me motion sick, Randy.
Oh, okay.
Mark, did you have a motion for item four?
You bet. Like the, have the approval for the payment for Northeast Asphalt Inc. Contract Unit Number 2020 dash zero one. As for street reconstruction and rehabilitation. It's for $282,267.54. That's payment number three.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Appears there's no discussion. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, number, I'd like to make the motion for number five for the approval for the change order for Yankee General Contractors, Inc. Contract Unit Number 2019 dash zero two. As for Province Terrace Trail, Nature's Way to U.S. Highway 10 South to Highway 114. That's an addition of five of $105. Change order number three and final.
Second.
The motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Appears there's no discussion. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
I'd like to, number six, I'd like to have the improvement for the payment to Yankee General Contractors, Inc. Contract Unit Number 2019 dash zero two. As for Province Terrace Trail, Nature's Way to U.S. Highway 10 South to Highway 114. That's an amount of $7,743.21. That's payment number nine and final.
Second.
The motion, a second. Is there any discussion? It appears there's no discussion. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Number seven, I'd like to have the approval for the payment on for Myron Construction Company, Inc. That's for the Public Works Construction Project in the amount of $1,254,518.35. Payment number six.
Second.
The motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item J is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for September 4th through 17th. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Yes, I was depending on the agenda on the screen and now it's not there. One moment, please.
I had the same problem with the movie. I practiced ahead of time. And of course, the video didn't work the same way when you guys all got on.
I move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of September 4th through September 17th in the amount of $3,561,669.66.
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Is there any discussion? I've got two lights on. Do you guys have discussion?
No, 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 no.
Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Just a note to the Alderman, if you guys would like a paper copy like I have, we can get you a paper copy of just the agenda. If you don't have a printer to do it at home, just stop by City Hall and we'll be happy to get you one if that makes life easier. Alderman Nichols, did you have a motion for the beverage operators licenses?
Yes, I moved to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2019 through 2021 licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated September 21st, 2020.
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item L is ordinances and resolutions. The first item is resolution 31. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for our 31 dash 20 authorization to apply for a Wisconsin Department of Natural.
Authorization to Apply for a Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Urban Forestry Grant entitled Growing Diversity in Manassas Urban Forest for the Year 2021, introduced by Alderman Ted Grady.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a motion by Mr. Grady and a second by Mr. Grady. Is there any question, discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item M is appointments, do we have a motion, Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you, Mayor, at this time, I'll move for the reappointment of Anthony Toons to the Utility Commission, or better known as the Water and Light Commission, for the term of nine twenty-one, twenty to ten one of 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, just second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Seeing more, motion carries. Item two is an appointment to the Police Commission, do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenick? Or anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor, at this time, I'll move for your appointment of Debbie Galiazi to the Police Commission for the term of nine twenty-one, twenty to five one, 2025. She's going to be busy.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, did you get the second, Haley? Hopefully?
Yes, I did.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And the chief will be happy to know I have another person to appoint to the Police Commission at the next meeting, so you'll have a full-up commission again then as well. I don't always comment on any matter, pardon? Public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. There was one person that I didn't recognize, I'm not sure if that was a member of the public. If anyone is out there, turn on your mic, please, and you're welcome to make comments at this point.
Hello, this is Teresa.
Hi Teresa.
Hi, I was wondering, I applied for the Curb Appeal Program. If, I thought maybe you'd be discussing that today and who qualifies for that, where that is all at?
So, the, actually, could we get your, your address as well for the minutes?
Sure, fourteen hundred Ninth Street, Manassas.
So the, normally we want to do question and answers, but since it's a fairly easy question, we'll just fill you in quick on that, but that is done by the Hosing Authority. And I'm not sure when the next meeting for that is, but you could call Sam Schrader and he would be able to help you with that.
Okay.
Sam is actually here this evening, and he might be able to help you yet tonight. Sam, do you, can you do that yet tonight? I know you're on.
I am just sending Teresa my contact information, so she should have it momentarily.
There you go, Teresa.
Thank you so much.
Taking care of for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, I'm sorry I missed the public comment section at the beginning.
Yeah, I was going to say so.
I noticed when I got to the end, but luckily you stuck around, so thank you for sticking around for us tonight.
Yeah, it was great to be part of this and listen, and I thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
Well, have a great evening.
Make sure there's not anyone else, too.
I believe that's the only person I did not recognize the name. Besides Lisa, who is Adam Alex. Yes, that's the only person that I don't recognize.
That Adam's new name, or what's going on?
His wife's email, I'm sure. So, seeing that there's no one else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move, we adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't hear any opposed, we are adjourned, thank you. Mark, did you want to start right away, or did you want to wait for a minute?
Oh, five, five minutes, everybody give me five minutes, yeah, I need five minutes.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, are we still on, being recorded?
You are being recorded yet, I don't know if we can stop it or not, once we started.
John, you can end the recording for this meeting and then start it again, once you start the Board of Public Works.